This conference will now be recorded.
We'll start again. The town of Orange Town Virtual Planning Board Meeting for Wednesday, March 10th. We have four agenda items tonight. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance, I guess.
Correct.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, starting this evening, we have the Sansone subdivision plan.
Do we want to do roll call, Bill?
Yes, Andrew, thank you. Roll call of members, Mr. Andrews.
Yeah.
Mr. Mandell.
Present.
Mr. Sweeney. Uh, Mr. Sweeney, I don't.
No, Mr. Sweeney advised Cheryl earlier that he was not going to be able to attend this evening.
Okay, Mr. Dell.
Here.
Mr. McCrory. I do not see Mr. McCrory on my screen either. And Mr. Bond.
I'm present.
All right, Mr. Bond, we'll need you to pinch hit this evening. Is that a problem?
No, I'm good to go, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, so what do we have, six of, uh, six of the seven members, or six spots filled?
Yeah, as soon as Warren shows up, we'll have six, right?
IT is working with him now, so just, uh, if you wanted to start, that's fine. Hopefully, we'll have him working in no time.
I see Mr. Warren on my screen. Uh, he is muted right now. I'll, anybody here?
You can start. He, he's on, he's just having technical difficulties, and IT is working with him.
Okay, Jane, I will start off. I see Mr. Warren on, I did hear him, but Tom, I'll kick off this first one for us. And we just lost Mr. Warren. Okay. Uh, Sansone subdivision plan. Uh, PB 21-17. Uh, up for final subdivision plan and final site plan review. Who do we have on the call for Sansone subdivision?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Lino Scheretta. Can you all hear me?
Yes, Mr. Scheretta. Can you hear me?
Very good, thank you. Again, for members of the public, members of the board, town council and staff, my name is Lino Scheretta, partner with the law firm Blakely, Platt &amp; Schmidt, on behalf of the applicant here this evening. With us, as part of the team this evening, we have the owner, Steve Griffin, who should be on, also our engineer, Paul Gdansky, and our architect, Luke Petraselli. Just, I know someone said it, so we are, we are here tonight for final, hopefully, we'll be final subdivision and final site plan approval. We were last here before your board back in January on preliminary, where we received preliminary approval and negative declaration de secre. So just to give you a bit of background of where we've come from, from this January to now, and some of the things that we changed, just by way of background, this is a four lot subdivision on Kings Highway and Herring. At the last meeting, there were a number of comments that were made that I believe we addressed in this new submission. And I know there are other letters that were submitted to the record tonight by Brooker and also town departments, which we'll get to. But just by way of background, there, there are a couple of things that we changed on the subdivision plan. Last month, January, rather, we were asked to change our provides to green giants on the plan. We did that. The, there was the issue of the driveway on Lot 2 of the subdivision. We've removed that driveway from Herring and now put it on Kings Highway. That was also a change that was requested by members of the public and the board at the last meeting, which we've done. With respect to Lot 4, which is the southernmost proposed lot, I know the neighbor to the south had requested, and the board requested that we move that, that lot 10 feet to the north, which we did. Uh, also, DME required that we updated our perk test, which we have done and provided to the town. We've also satisfied the soil board requirement and updated the DME, DME comments on piping. Pretty much, that's all we have. I know we received other letters tonight from the town consultants. We also received a letter from the Garrigal regarding a tree on the property. And I know there was a suggestion from, from the resident that we remove that tree. As, as the applicant, the applicant will do what the board desires. If the board wishes us to remove that tree, we will. If they wish us to keep it, again, it's the board's pleasure, but it is a large tree. But I know Mr. Garrigal, in his letter and email, had asked us to take that tree down. Again, the applicant is okay with that, provided that the board wishes us to do so. So I just wanted to note that. And also, again, we received comments from Mr. Ken Gennaro from Brook Engineering, which noted, and I'll just note for the record, that the adverse impacts with respect to drainage can be mitigated, and that's in his recent memo of March 10th, 2021. We also received memos from Mr. Bruce Peters, which we have acknowledged, and we do not have a problem with, with respect to the conditions in that latest memo from Mr. Peters. I know he satisfied his earlier memo back in January, but we have also received his latest memo, and I believe, and the applicant is online, correct me if I'm wrong, we are okay with the suggestions set forth in that memo. So he's giving us a thumbs up, so we're, we're good there. So that's all we have this evening for the subdivision. Again, unless the members of the board, the public have any questions, but that's where we are. We hope, we look, this board will look favorable on this application, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scheretta. With that having been said, I'll start off with the correspondence from the Office of Building Zoning and Planning, March 8th, from Jane Slaven. Mrs. Slaven has three comments. Any comments need to be addressed there, Mr. Scheretta?
No, we, we agree with those comments.
Very good. Moving on to the Office, the Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, town of Orange Town, letter dated March 9th from Bruce Peters. Mr. Peters has 12 comments. One of the comments, the overflow piping, number three. Oh, also, number two, the revised drainage calculation shall be submitted on 8 and 1/2 by 11. Also, the perk rate used for Lot 1 dry well is incorrect. According to the results, the perk rate is 14 inches per hour, not 12. calculation will need to be revised. Any comments to these?
No, like I stated with the chairman, members of the board, we are okay with the DME's letter of March 9th, 2021, and we will comply with those conditions.
Thank you. We have a letter from Steve Griffin, February 17th, 2021. It's his narrative for tonight's meeting. We have letters, a letter from Mr. and Mrs. Grant Parish. In addition to my previous letter to the Orange Board, Orange Town Planning Board, please include this with that letter headed subject Sansone subdivision. Thank you very much. And it's a narrative of, "I recently received this photo of our house that was taken in 1915 or 16. What is interesting is the swell across the street from us and the Sansone subdivision property on Kings Highway. There was a problem with water, quote unquote, runoff over 100 years ago, and there is still a problem with water collecting at the foot of Herring from higher ground at the same spot. Now there is a storm drain on Kings Highway, but heavy rains, it isn't sufficient to handle the runoff. Concern is, we have planners, have the planners of the subdivision solved the drainage issue? Or will they make it worse by building three homes? Shirley and Grant Parish, 495 Kings Highway Sparkin."
If I could just, sorry, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
No, I just want to add, we acknowledge that letter, and I will note, as I stated earlier, pursuant to Brooker's March 10th, 2021 memo, that they are satisfied with our drainage mitigation measures that we have proposed on the site.
Very good, thank you. Another letter from the parishes on January 22nd. It's another letter. 46 years. "Herring Ave. is narrow dead end street with a surprising amount of traffic. When drivers discover they have turned onto the wrong street, they turn around in our driveway or use our lawn. There is a business on Herring that has FedEx and UPS trucks making pickups and deliveries all day. Most of these trucks back up the street rather than turn around after they have made their delivery slash pickups. Additional driveways on Herring will only add more traffic. The subdivision seems to gamble on the safety of children and grownups that use the street to walk on. Two, runoff and drainage. Our property slopes down towards Kings Highway with our house in the middle. In addition, our house gets runoff from three different directions, so a heavy downpour. We get runoff from the back and three sides. Subdivision runoff also slopes towards Herring Ave. Will the dry wells that are proposed be enough to handle the runoffs from roof decks, driveways of our, of the new homes? Less homes would help remedy this." Three, pollution, the air we breathe is getting dirtier. I've noticed over the years, the airborne dirt is collecting on the sills, the screens, porches, filling gutters and attach itself to the roof and sightings, and it's getting worse. More cars, more exhaust from heating systems, fireplaces, et cetera. Will just add to what already is a problem. Solution, reduce the amount of lots. Number four, I would like to see that as many healthy trees be saved as possible. There is a beautiful American copper birch, a beech tree on Kings Highway. We have the sister to that tree in our property. Our children gave it the perfect name, the Elephant Tree. The other tree is Japanese maple on the corner of Herring and Kings Highway, and is at least 100 years old. I hope they keep some trees to produce oxygen so birds have somewhere to perch. Lot 4 is home to several, several deer. What will happen to them? Number five, and I would also like to see the old house built in 1870 on the corner remain where it is. Just because it isn't on the national register doesn't mean it's fair, it's fair game for the wrecking ball. It is, powers to be, have decided to keep or lose it. Those have asbestos siding, which has a lot of regulations if siding is disturbed. What is, what a hazard, health hazard that would be. We don't want any part of airborne asbestos. Number six, we're surrounded by subdivisions. We don't want anymore and certainly don't need anymore. These subdivisions are all built since my wife and I moved here. These homes seem, been built on more property than what is being proposed for the subdivision lot. And they list numerous subdivisions in that area. My wife and I all moved here because we love the area, low key, nice neighbors and charming. All this will change forever. Large homes on small lots proposed by this builder. Doesn't add one thing to our community. It will only leave a scar. Regardless, Shirley and Grant Parish. We also have letters from Brooker. Brooker. You know what? Go ahead, Mr. Scheretta.
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Um, so I'm downloading the, uh, the letter. From Brooker Engineering, March 10th, 2021. I'll go to the end. The application has provided sufficient information to demonstrate that potential significant adverse impacts with respect to drainage can be mitigated. Therefore, recommend Sansone subdivision be approved for drainage subject to the above project comments. There was a little letter from a neighbor, Mr. Mc.
William Peter McGarrigal on 4 Dier Street?
Yes, I'm looking for the letter. Uh, here it is, got it. Um, and, uh, an email we had dated March 10th from Peter McGarrigal. Directly behind the property located 43 Kings Highway. Please review and consider the following points before final approval is given for the, the subdivision. Number one, at the meeting conducted in February, the applicant indicated he would be willing to install the screening vegetation in the berm. This step would mitigate my concern and concerns of my neighbors regarding water from the subdivision impacting adjacent properties. It is critical to note, attendees on the conference call incorrectly stated that the applicant had not offered this. Due to the format of the meeting, there was no opportunity to correct the record at the time. Number two, a large tree on the property line adjacent to my lot, number 21, poses a risk to my home and any proposed structures to be built. In addition, it will complicate the installation of the screening vegetation that appears on the proposed site plan. Due to the crowding that will result from the house envelope that is proposed, it will be more expensive for future removal of this hazardous tree. Please require that this tree be removed before any construction or site grading changes begin. Number three, Note 37 on page one says, "Should existing structure on Lot number one be demolished?" The only structure currently on Lot number one is a garage building. The existing house is located on number two, on Lot labeled number two. A plan on being in attendance at tonight's planning board meeting. Thank you, Peter McGar. Cheryl, that's all I have, I believe.
Did you read the letter from the Bureau of Fire Prevention?
I did not see that letter.
It should have been after Bruce Peters. From Dave Majewski.
Am I on yet? You're on. Oh, okay, very good. Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you're on.
Anybody here?
There's a letter from the Bureau of Fire Prevention dated March 8th. David.
If Mr. Warren has it, please read it.
I'll be right back.
I'll, I'll read it in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, David Majewski, March 8th, 2021. The Bureau of Fire Prevention has no comments at this time.
That's all the letters.
Thank you, Cheryl, thank you, Jane. Okay, I will open this up to members of the board. Mr. Mandell. Thank you. My face is not moving, the screen is frozen, but hopefully you can hear me. Just a couple of things, you already answered the, my questions about the DME 3 and 4. So you have no problems with the overflow piping on those items?
That's correct.
Okay. Secondly, I see you did, going to test pit excavation on 8, 118, and the perk test on 118 conducted by fairway testing. Was DME notified prior to the testing? And, or did they witness it also?
They were notified.
And they, and they witnessed too.
Okay, thank you. No further, everything else you, I was going to ask about you stating in your opening. No further at this time, I'll wait for the comments from any of the community members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mandell.
Thank you, Mr. Mandell. We'll move on to Mr. Bond.
Okay, just, you know, I don't have any issue with them removing that tree if the neighbor's on board with it. Really, my only question is, I know in, at prior meetings, the applicant had stated that his intention is not to rip down that house, and he hopes to be renovating at some point. Is there a way that we can, if, if the applicant does change his mind on that, that we can make him come back to the planning board before he would be granted a demo permit to rip down that house? So that was, that's just my question. I don't know whether Jane has an answer for that, or?
Good, Jane.
Typically, for the demolition of a single family home, it would not require planning board approval?
Right, that's why, that's why I wanted to make it, you know, requirement, just so, you know. I wanted to tell us, and then they're gonna, you know, all of a sudden, they're gonna rip it down after they get the file, you know, after they get the approval on it, so.
Well, again, the planning board can make that a condition if that's what you choose to do. Again, it's not standard practice for a single family home. And if they are to demolish it, any new home that they plan on instructing would have to meet the zoning requirements as well. So if the planning board chooses to make that a condition, obviously, you can do that.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Mr. Bond. And Mr. Dell.
Thank you very much, sir. Obviously, this is a, an interesting location. No matter what is done here, it'll never be totally perfect. But I feel, given the constraints and the efforts the applicants has made, I think it is certainly in the acceptable range. It's ideal. Obviously, from my opinion, I would say not. I would agree with the limitation Mr. Bond just agreed to put up, and also to the comment about the tree. I have no problem with that one tree being removed. It looks like you put trees on the perimeters. They did move the location of the house next to Lot 4, as we requested. Other than that, I feel that it's acceptable, but I want to hear what the other members say after I'm done. I think there's still one member or so to go. And also too, I would obviously like to hear what the members of the public has to say. With that, I end my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dell. Mr. Warren, can you make any comments?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, we're back in business. I have, I, at this point, I have no questions or comments on this.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. I will weigh in on the tree. I agree with Mr. Mandell and Mr. Dell about the removal of that tree in the back. I, I think it caused major problems in the future. Should it be down or need to be taken down? I have no objection to Mr. Bond's request for demolition of the older house in the future, that the applicant would have to come back. That's all I had. Uh, did Mr. McCrory join?
Mr. Andrews has no objection to the subdivision. I believe the applicant has showed good faith in trying to complete everything on the list, and I have no objection of that tree coming down either. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. That's it for all the board members, for six of the eight that we have. Open it up to the public.
Yes, Todd Weiss, 490 Kings Highway.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Weiss, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Okay, I'll try to make it brief. I, I do appreciate the efforts that Mr. Griffin and his team have made to try to make this as pleasurable for the neighbors as possible. But one thing that's still been completely, not even entertained, was the fact that we could reduce this by one lot in order to reduce congestion, because I don't know why the Office of Fire Prevention had no comment. But as most of us witnessed the other night when there was an emergency on Herring Ave, it was an absolute mess trying to get emergency vehicles in and out. You know, it, it's a tiny street, there's nothing anybody can do about it. But adding two houses to the street is only going to severely exacerbate the problem. And reducing it by one lot wasn't even entertained last meeting. It was pretty much dismissed before we were all shut down. Otherwise, you know, I'm glad they're gonna try to save the house. The drainage seems to be concerned, addressed as far as I'm concerned, but it's still congested. That is all.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Would anybody else from the public like to speak regarding this project?
Good evening. I look at Kings Highway, right across from the subdivision. And I just need clarification on one issue. We left it, and I heard tonight, in, in going over the notes and whatever last meeting, that there were, would be two driveways on Herring, two new driveways, and two, two driveways on Kings. But looking at the plans, and it might just be my inability to read plans, it still looks like there's a driveway in Herring Avenue for Lot number two. And that was, all I need is clarification on, there are only gonna be two driveways, additional driveways on Herring, and there'll be two additional driveways on Kings Highway.
Can I just respond to that real quick, Mr. Chair? On the plan, it does state, there's a notation that states that the driveway is to be removed for Lot 2. It's stated on the plan.
It does say that. It says McCannum driveway to be removed.
Correct.
Says it on the plan.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Parish?
Okay, I. It just visually looks like it's still, still there. Adjacent to our driveway, that's why I'm, was a little concerned. Along with three, two is better than three.
And then the notation says it's.
A driveway.
Mr. Parish, on the plans, it says that driveway will be removed. I think we have a computer issues again.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Parish.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Parish. Yes, would someone else like to speak to this? Ms. Hickey?
Yes. I'm just a little concerned about the tree. The tree you're talking about, I believe, you spoke Elephant Tree. And I am across from Tim's daughter, 5 Herring Avenue. And I look at the chief over there on that one lot that I collect, 10 feet north. I just want to know if that big tree is coming down. And because the two branches that are not long, and at any moment, they're either going to go to the daughter's house or my house. That's my question.
And someone repeat that question, which was hard to hear.
You need me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
5 Herring Avenue. 4 or not. That's the lot that you moved 10 feet north. And right there, that might be the one you were talking about, the deer. Somebody was talking about the deer. There are a lot of deer in that area. Are the trees? Are the trees being moved in that area? Because there's one huge tree right on the edge of the road and the fire, the water pole is there. And that tree looks like it's ready to go. It's huge. So I don't know if that's your plan to remove that, but if it's not, then soon to rethink that. That's all my concern.
Again, I'm confused as to which tree Ms. Hickey is talking about.
Yes.
I'll go. It's across, it's next to Slaughter's house, and my house is across the street from that, from Jim Slaughter's house. And that's the lot where you said that you were moving the project of that lot 10 feet north toward King's Highway. It's right there on that side. And you can't miss the tree. It's huge and it's old and it's cracking.
I think we're talking about Lot Four, Steve.
Yeah, all the, all the trees on the southeast corner of Lot Four are coming out. I don't know specifically which one we're talking about, but
Because it's huge even here. So, okay, that's good then. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Hickey. Would anybody else like to speak to this project?
Yeah, this is Jim Slaughter. I'm the property owner south of Lot Four, and I, I believe that the tree Seal Hickey was talking about is right at the very front of our driveway bordering Lot Four, and it is a rather large tree, and it is not in particularly good, good shape. So I think that's the one she's, you know, trying to confirm will be taken down also. The other thing that I think caused some confusion for me, as well as for Grant Parish, about the McAdam driveway being removed in Lot Two, is that there still appears on the plan to be a curb cut for what had been the driveway proposed to enter onto Herring Avenue, and it perhaps was just an oversight that that wasn't removed from the plan. Does it, is that clear?
If it's, if it says it's going to be removed, that's the, it's going to be removed, the McAdam and the curb cut will be removed from, from that spot.
Okay, well, I think that's the confusion, because the curb cut still seems to be appeared in what are, you're calling your final plans.
Yeah, there is a notation that says the way we show it is to be removed, and that's how it's typically shown.
The driveway, yes.
Right.
All right.
Mr. Shoretta, I do see what Mr. Souter is talking about regarding, it looks like a new curb cut is still included in there, even though it says McAdam to be removed.
Yeah, you're looking, what sheet are you referring to? Is it sheet two or four?
Two or four, two or four.
It's just the
Mr. Chairman, curb cut.
Right, Mr. Chairman, I can answer that. They're showing a stabilized construction entrance. But once construction is over, that stabilized construction entrance is removed, and that driveway will be eliminated, and we will make sure that that's done.
Yeah, including the curb cut will be gone.
Correct. There'll be no more driveway there.
Thank you for the clar- Anything else, Mr. Souter?
Was I clear about the, was it helpful at all for what I was trying to say about the tree that Seal Hickey was discussing?
I understand your tree. I want to know if this is different than Mr. McGargle's tree on Lot One.
I believe it is different, yes. But the owner said that all the trees along the property line of 3 Herring Avenue and Lot Four are going to be removed. So that would, I guess one has to believe that that large unhealthy tree at the very front of Lot Four would also be taken down. Is that correct? Stephen Griffin?
The
Steve, I think he's referring to number 10 on the plan, I believe.
Yeah, if you look at sheet number one, if you zoom in on all the trees there, they're all numbered, and the ones with Xs on them are to be removed. So if you know specifically which one you're talking about, if it has an X on it, that means that it's coming out.
I'll try and zoom in. It's tough.
But number 10 has an X on it.
I didn't know that tree got a number. That's
Number 10 is right up against the Herring Drive, Herring Ave.
Oh, it's right, it's right up on the front. Yeah, okay. Is, is 10 sort of buried in those numbers, 41.22?
Yes, it's right between them.
Yes.
I, I think that may be that tree, then. It's a little hard to tell, but it looks like it. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak to this project?
Me again. You'll take me here?
You've already spoken, Ms. Hickey.
I just want to make another point about that tree, whether it's 10 or not. It is right on a fire hydrant, so that may make a difference. That's all I want to say.
It is right directly adjacent to the fire hydrant, based on the plan, Mr. Chairman.
If I could make a comment, my name is Larry Vale. I'm at 389 Kings Highway. I just want to reinforce what the board had said before about saving the house, and I applaud the applicant for wanting to intending to do it, but I think there should be a trust but verify situation and making this a condition of any, making a planning board review of any permit, I certainly would support. Last time, we didn't really get around to answering all the questions, including one that I had about another tree, and Mr. Parish has mentioned it, and maybe some other people. This beech tree, it's number 23, I believe. It's a little fuzzy on Lot Number One. And I just, I guess my question to the applicant is, why does this have to be removed? It's out of the way of the house. It's close to the line. They show drainage infrastructure going through there, but other houses have it on the other side of the house. I just don't understand why this has been subject to elimination. And I would also like to say Mr. McGarwick proposed removing one of the trees that's close to his lot. I don't have any problem losing that one. It doesn't look very healthy. And he also mentioned that some of the record was not quite right. All I can say is, from my memory of the last meeting, what he recited was accurate. So thank you. I would like to know why that tree is slated to be removed, though. Thank you.
That beech tree, unfortunately, the sewer from that house runs right through the root system of that tree. Even if you relocated the dry well, you most likely would lose the tree on accessing the sewer.
That's on page two, right, Mr. Griffin?
Yes, page two.
So you're saying they need to dig up that sewer line? If you don't mind me asking.
There's currently no home there, so there's no sewer line. So the new connection off the new house has to catch in the street, and that's the way that it would go, is right through the root system of that tree.
But there are such things as bends. I mean, you're saying the manhole connection is right, is right across from that tree in the street? I mean, I just don't know why it has to go there. Why can't it go towards the center of the lot?
There's too many utilities that have to go to the house that, that are gonna be interrupted, but because the tree is there. So no matter what, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna end up taking down roots of the tree and killing it.
Well, okay. I mean, I guess what I'm saying to the board is, I would like to explore every possibility of, of not, you know, of doing something besides that. I'm not, I'm not convinced there's no other way. Maybe, obviously, you know about it more, but I'd like the board to review that and make some suggestions to avoid losing that tree. Thank you.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, just mark for the record that that was Paul Gdansky that responded to the utilities.
That's our engineer.
Correct. Let's see. You should state your name if it's the first time speaking.
Sorry.
Thank you for clarification. Anyone else like to speak to this project?
My name is Richard Wigan. I live on 14 Dieter Street, directly behind Lot, or I guess. I'm still concerned about the runoff. It may have adequate drainage on that lot, but the runoff hasn't been addressed. Those are two separate things in my mind. Also, there's a hickory tree right on the borderline between my, between my lot and Mr. McGargle's lot. But it's actually on the, on the other property that's being addressed. And I really think that that's gonna have to be removed also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wigan.
This is PB Gargle. I just like to, yeah, it's PB Gargle. I hope I can just make one last comment.
Keep it brief.
Yes, sir. I just want to thank the applicant and the board for, again, PB Gargle, I'm in 4 Dieter Street. I'm in the lot to the side. I just want to thank the board and the applicant for considering the removal of that tree that is on that berm that I identified in my, my notes, and so I appreciate that. And then just that last little bit, I think that to consider, Mr. Griffin did suggest that he might be able to put that vegetation in with a berm. I would just invite him to really reconsider that. I think that would help out my neighbor, Mr. Wigan, and might help to direct the, the water flow away from our properties. But other than that, I do appreciate the good faith effort that he and the rest of the team have done, and again, thanks to the board for considering and listening to our feedback.
Thank you, Mr. McGargle. Would anybody else like to speak to this project?
I have a question. My name is Jim Solder again. Are we Yes, I know, but my question is, are we gonna discuss next the renderings of the houses, or is that, is that part of this discussion now?
We asked the applicant to send us the renderings of the house. I don't believe they're going to be discussed, because they're gonna have to come back for site plan, correct, Jane?
Well, the reason, the reason I ask is because it does seem to be a discrepancy in the drawings that are shown on drawing 38201, and the sort of photo representation shown on 3-3D101. It's not the same house pictured on page four of four. So I guess I'd like to, I guess my, I'm asking a question about when and how are these, these houses discussed in terms of appearance or consistency between the way they're being presented and the way they're, they are going to be built, or the way they're drawn in these elevations.
We're here this evening to approve the subdivision plan.
Mr. Chairman, it is subdivision and site Mr. Chairman, it is subdivision and site plan.
Okay.
All right, we have a number of them on tonight. Give me one second. Yeah, final subdivision and site plan.
Okay, wouldn't the houses be looked at at Akabor?
That is correct. If you look at my, my letter, number one, which was the condition that you, the planning board made at the last hearing, is that per condition number three of the planning board decision, number 2056, January 13th, 2021, Akabor review is required. The board asked the applicant to provide the design concepts for the house, the houses at the last meeting. So they have done that, and they are asking for final subdivision as well as final site plan, but the houses themselves need to go to Akabor.
Thank you.
So what do you need addressed here, Mr. Souter?
I guess my question is, when, when, if they're reviewed by Akabor, how is that, I'm unfamiliar with the, the name of that, and when that is, and how residents participate in that review, or if they do at all.
Akabor is the Architectural Review Board.
Areas. Board of Review.
And we, and residents that have received notice about the subdivision will receive notice about that also.
Mr. Chairman, I can address that. That, absolutely. You will receive notification. It's also a public meeting, and that the design of the homes will be discussed at Akabor.
Thank you for clearing that up or letting, letting us know about what some of the next processes are. Will, will there be planned views of these buildings available at some time to review also?
When they make the submission to Akabor, they have to make an application. They will provide your elevations as to the architectural design of the dwellings.
Well, I guess it was difficult to understand the discrepancies between the elevations on page three of four and the photo illustration on page four of four for the building proposed for Lot Four, because they don't represent the same, they're not the same building, so I guess that was my concern.
I understand your confusion. However, there was three different house designs presented that are similar in architectural style, and the Architectural Review Board will review them each individually and make their recommendations as, as part of the architectural design.
I understand that. It's just that there's large, a large section of the house shown in elevation that's not shown in that photo representation on page four of four, which is, which is very misleading. But that will be discussed at this Akabor review I discussed.
If I may, this is Luke Petricelli, architect. I think I can tell you that they are the same building, absolutely. I think that what you might be seeing is that, and why we provided the three dimensional views, is because when you add perspective to the drawing, you see a lot of that massing that's in the back that you see in elevation. It's no longer visible from the street, which is why we wanted to provide the three dimensional views. When you look at a building in flat elevation, you tend to see things beyond, and it's a little bit of abstraction. They're 100% the same buildings. That is how they will look on the street.
I, I'm having a hard time understanding how that, that whole back section that's clearly beats the highest ridge line of the, of the structure would not be of, of the, of the structure would not be visible from the, from the street. That's.
It's in the purview of Akabor. I wasn't in my purview here. Would anyone else like to speak regarding this project?
Mr. Dell has his hand up.
All right, it's still open to the public. Would, would anybody else from the public like to speak on this matter?
Okay, I'll make a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Mandel.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, if I can, I'll ask everyone who is not a member of the board to please mute your microphone because for some reason we're getting a lot of feedback tonight. If you could please. Okay, if you're not speaking, please mute your microphone. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Dell.
Yeah, I just wanted to, it's a point of information. I understand Mr. Sauter's comments. I'm sure the other board, I can't speak for the other board members. I'm sure we've all taken a look at it. The reason I was interested myself in seeing these architectural plans is to get an idea of the feeling of these plans and to see if they were compatible to the existing houses that have, and also to that there was some sort of sensitivity to the limitations. Um, obviously Akabor is going to go over the plans in greater detail, but from my own view, having been on Akabor for two decades, is that, um, I don't find them at all objectionable and, uh, I find them a lot less, uh, I find them to be not really all of us all in terms of what could be there. Obviously, the best thing would be to keep it forever without any development, but that's obviously not going to happen. But given what's happened, I think the applicant on this, other issues seems to have made a good faith effort to, uh, to fix the situation. Thank you very much, sir. I agree with you, Mr. Dell. Thank you. All right, the public portion's been closed. Um, I guess we have to go through SEACRA and, uh, NECDAC again for final.
I'll make a motion for NECDAC.
Mr. Mandel seconds.
Mr. Mandel seconds. All in favor?
I'll make a motion for lead agency opposed.
Mr. Mandel's second. Recommendation, lead agency?
I'll second lead agent.
Mr. Andrews. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And I'll make a motion for final with conditions.
Can I just speak one moment? Sorry, no, no. Can I just?
Mr. Sherratt, go ahead.
Just one clarification on the condition. Just, uh, earlier, there were discussions about the, the house on lot number two. And I just want to understand the condition that if we're renovating the house, which I guess our, my client is intending to do, there, we don't have to come back before you're bored, but i- if it's a question of, you know, we, renovation is not possible and we have to someday demolish it. Is the condition that we have to come back before you're bored for demo? Uh, we know we have to come back for site plan on lot, on that lot if, if the house is ever demolished, but I guess I was not absolutely certain of that condition. I just want a clarification of that. That's all.
That, that was my intent, that you had to come back before you demo it. Because I mean, to be honest with you, you could go in tomorrow and get a demolition permit from, from, to demo, demo the house, you know? So I just wanted you to come back. Uh, I'm not saying I'm against it. If, if that's what, the way, the way it's going to ultimately, if it doesn't make sense to renovate or you can't renovate it. But I just want to, I just don't want to rip down before, you know?
Yeah, and I, and I just like I said. Yeah, I hear you, Mr. Bond. I, it's just, I'm just looking logistically, just from a practical matter, how that works. I mean, do we have to come back before the planning board to get a demo permit approved? I just haven't seen that in the code or I'm just not familiar with that process. I understand if we have to come back for your board for site plan of the house if we, if we demo it.
We would do the whole thing at the same time. You know, you would come back in for the demo permit and the plans to further re, rebuilding the house, you know, or to, for the new house. You would do that, one in the same.
So, Steve, I just want to make sure you understand that. So reno, renovation, I think is okay, but if we're going to come in for a demo, you have to come up with a site plan and then, you know, before the planning board, I guess is what I'm hearing.
It would, it would be like a preliminary site plan approval.
Correct.
That's fine.
Okay, that's all. Thank you. Sorry about that. Just wanted to clear, throw that up. Thank you.
Okay, I had a final from Mr. Bond, uh, with conditions. We'll go through the conditions. Jane Slaven's letter of March eighth with three comments. We have Bruce Peters' DEME letter of March ninth with twelve comments. Fire inspection. Letter with no comments. Um, am I missing something, Cheryl?
Uh, you're not missing anything. No comments.
Okay, can I get a second on, uh, Sansone subdivision?
Andrew seconds.
You have to add that condition in.
Uh, yes.
Let me ask you a question. As part of the final condition, we are adding that they do have to come back if they wish to demolish the house, to come back for the demolition permit and the site plan approval for whatever they want to put up. That's also a condition. Am I correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, tha- thank you.
And the tree removal.
Uh, it sounds like there's two tree removals.
I think one is already slated for removal. The other one they were asking due to the condition of the tree to have it removed.
Yeah.
I don't know if it was number ten.
I, I believe that Mr. Garagel's tree that i- that's referenced in his letter, that's the one I believe that the board would like us to take down. And then the other trees that were referenced were the ones on lot four that are marked on the plan to be taken down. But, um, with respect to the McGaragel tree, I believe your board wanted that tree taken down.
Yes, affirmative.
Thank you.
Excuse me, do you have the tree numbers?
It's number ten. Twenty, twenty-one.
Twenty-one on lot one.
Correct.
Mr. Griffin, you have that number twenty. That's, that's on the board of Wigan's property as well.
Twenty wasn't brought up. Um, I'm not sure which one it is, um, in person.
Okay, I see twenty, I see twenty-three.
Twenty-three is by the, uh, the drainage, uh, system and utilities.
Oh, twenty-one, Mr. Griffin, you said you're going to.
Twenty-one is, is the one that sounds like it's going to be a condition.
Right, that's the one.
Okay, number twenty is the one at the intersection of Mr. McGargle and Mr. Wigan's property.
Yeah, wasn't that slated to come?
It's, it does not have an X on it. I think that is the one that they were addressing.
Correct.
Jane, that was number twenty-one.
Now, number twenty-one is behind Mr. McGargle's property directly to the east. Number twenty is at the intersection of both properties.
Correct.
And my understanding. Right, number twenty is the one that both neighbors mentioned.
Okay. Apologies, I apologies, Mr. Chairman. Can I clarify this? It's a mistake being made right now.
Okay, yes, please clarify.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ms. Slaven. Uh, my concern was twenty-one and so, uh, applicant has, uh, acknowledged that and I think it was in their opening comments. My neighbor, Mr. Wigan, is referencing number twenty, which is the hickory at the corner. So, uh, what we've together brought up is the two. So, so thanks for the opportunity to clarify.
Noted. Thank you.
So we're saying twenty and twenty-one.
Okay, thank you.
And the other condition was, uh, Mr. Bond's recommendation to come back for, and Mr. Warren's recommendation that they come back for lot two demolition and site plan.
Yeah, i- if they decide not to run into the house.
Correct. Okay.
All in favor?
I think we had Andrew second that one. Um, all in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, Mr. Griffin, good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Mr. Young, would you let me take over? Absolutely. Stay close in case his computer decides not to work.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Next applicant is SM Green's site plan subdivision twenty-one dash eighteen.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. Mr. Chairman, as in the past on this application, uh, I would, I asked. Thank you very much, sir. Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'm Donald Brenner. I'm the attorney for the applicant here. Mr. Jay Greenwell is here. He is the designer of the project. We have been before the planning board twice on this particular project where we've got an approval, preliminary approval. The first time they requested that we go to the zoning board. We went to the zoning board, got approval, and then the planning board requested us to come back the second time. We came back the second time and we did get approval again. Uh, we've been to Akabor. We are now here for final approval. Jay, do you want to add anything to the project before they get to the letters?
No, I think might as well go right to the comments.
Okay, thank you. I'll read the comments. Office of Building Zoning and Planning, Jane Slaven, March eighth. Shift three. Department of Environmental Management Engineering, Town of Orange Town, Bruce Peters, March ninth. Mr. Brenner or Jay, if you have any, uh, if you want to make any questions or comments while we're going through it, please do.
Yes, thank you. Uh, just, just a brief comment. I know, uh, you want to hear that we're just going to work it out with Bruce, which is what we're going to say. Uh, but we do have some questions that, uh, Bruce seems to want us to put some additional catchphrases on the street. Uh, it doesn't, it's not a requirement that, uh, was, was, uh, pointed out by Mr. Booker in his review, uh, issuing a, an approval subject to conditions. So I just wanted to alert the board that we're, we're going to be talking to Bruce about it, but obviously we have to satisfy his concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, uh, Mr. Peters has thirteen comments. Bureau of Fire Prevention, March eighth. Has no comment this time. Booker Engineering, March ninth. Those action has proposed frequent drainage informations that demonstrate the potential significant adverse impacts with respect to drainage can be mitigated. We therefore recommend that SMK Green subdivision be approved for drainage subject to the above project comments, of which there are six.
No objection.
Thank you. Um, Rockland County Planning. Dated March first.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
There was a, there's a subsequent March tenth later, letter from county, which, uh, clarifies some confusion about two of the items in there and it says it supersedes March first letter.
I don't have that. Cheryl, did you send that to me? Cause I don't have that.
Yes, Tom, I believe it was in the package, uh, that you picked up. And I said, well.
Basically, Mr. Chairman, it, uh, it clarifies our concerns on item number one and number five. But the rest of it, we have no objection to.
Okay, I'm. I noticed there's a notation uh, pertaining to that they did not receive any, uh, information. And I know I have a, a letter dated September sixteenth that they, uh, they had received it. On July twenty-eighth, I take that back, July twenty eighth, twenty, that they had received it. So they've received it. If they didn't review it, I think that, that is their problem, it's not ours.
The March tenth letter, uh, clarifies that.
Okay, all right. Uh, I'm sure, I know you sent it to me and I just misplaced it. So, uh, we'll just put that in the record, March tenth, the letter from, uh, Department of Planning.
Mr. Chairman, can we clarify that the applicant has no issue with any of the comments from the Rockland County Planning Board at this point?
We do not, and we're not asking for any overrides.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, I also have a note from the, uh, dated July twenty eighth, two thousand twenty from ZBA in respect to, uh, um, this item, where they say they didn't, they didn't get the, uh, information. They also have Rockland County, uh, Health dated July third, two thousand twenty. They have two comments. A letter from, uh, Orange and Rockland Utilities dated twenty-second. Uh, Or- Orange Rockland has two gas service feeds, existing dwellings on Western Highway. The developer should contact O and R, New Business Department for service termination and relocation part to work. All codes seven fifty-three rules must apply. Okay, and I have a note from Rockland County Highway. Um, no comments, no further comments, and that's all. Anything else, Cheryl?
That's it, Tom.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to open it up to the board. Mr. Young? Did he run away on me?
No, I'm here.
No comments, Mr. Chairman? Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Mandel?
Uh, no comments, Mr. Chairman. They seem to have answered all of our conditions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dell? Oh, Mr. Dell is abstained from this. Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Andrews?
I have no comments. Everything looks fine.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. McCoury here yet? No, okay. Mr. Bond?
I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay, fine. Thank you very much, sir. Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this, this application? Okay, one more time. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this application?
I say none, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I'm asking for a motion to close the public?
Motion to close the public.
Mandel. Okay, do I have a second?
Mr. Mandel.
Mr. Mandel, thank you very much, Mr. Mandel. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No opposition. Okay, um, where the heck was I? I got lost again. Oh. Okay, um, make a, can I have a motion to, uh, reaffirm, uh, lead agent?
Mr. Chairman, just to bring up this, uh, when you've done SEACRA, you don't have to do lead agency. You are already the lead agency in this matter. You just have to vote to reaffirm SEACRA, which means that nothing has changed. It's still a negative declaration. Your previous finding stands. So you don't have to do anything else. You just have to vote to reaffirm SEACRA.
Good, thank you very much, sir. Okay.
Mr. Mandel, motion to reaffirm.
Mr. Mandel, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconds.
Okay, Mr. Bond's seconds. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposition. Okay. Uh, final, who makes a motion for final with conditions?
Mr. Mandel, final with conditions.
Mr. Mandel, thank you, sir. Uh, Office of Building Zoning and Enforcement, Jane Slaven, March eighth, three. Environmental Management and Engineering, Bruce Peters, thirteen. Environmental Management and Engineering, Bruce Peters, 13. Bureau of Fire Prevention, one. Booker Engineering, six. Department of Planning, Rockland County Department of Planning, nine. Rockland County Health, two. And that's all. Do I have a second?
Mr. Andrew, seconds.
Mr. Andrew, second. Do I have, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposition. You have your final, sir. Good luck with it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a good evening. Mr. Dell, welcome back. Hey, next is Tapan Plaza Subdivision Plan, PB 21-19. And Ms. Slavin, are we doing these separately or can we put them together?
We have to do them separately, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much.
They each have their own number.
This is PB-19.
Is that the site plan or the subdivision? I don't have it in front of me.
Subdivision.
Oh, okay, all right. On this particular project, we have been before the, your board in terms of we got preliminary approval. We did not require any variances. We held back on final approval based on the fact that we want to do it jointly. We are now coming in for final approval with the for site plan with the planning board. So therefore, we'd now like to have subdivision approval on this particular project. Primarily what we're doing is we're taking the one building, separating it out for the supermarket, and the rest of the shopping center will remain as, as it exists right now.
Thank you, sir. Okay, let me go through the comments. Office of Building Zoning and Planning Administration, Jane Slavin, March 8. She has six comments. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Town of Orange Town, March 9, Bruce Peters, has six. The Bureau of Fire Prevention, March 9. Has no further comments. Booker Engineering, March 10. The proposed applicant has provided significant drainage information and demonstrate that potential significant adverse impacts with respect to drainage can be mitigated. We therefore recommend that the Tapan Plaza site plan and subdivision be approved for drainage subject to the above project comments at this time, of which there are six. Rockland County Planning, February 23rd. They have 15. Rockland County Highway, dated February 9. This department has no comments. A letter dated February 22nd, Brumba, Orange and Rockland. Got a letter from the Department, New York State Department of Transportation dated March 4. They have quite a narrative. Okay, New York State Department of Transportation has received the updated plans revised dated 2321. Traffic study for the proposed grocery store on Route 303 and Tapan Plaza. At this time, the New York State DOT has no further recommendation and is ready to issue permits for the proposed grocery store. It also says the New York State DOT recommends the town to turn the need for sidewalks along the frontage of Tapan Plaza and New York State Route 303. With the project currently under review with the town, it would be the best time to add additional sidewalks to this corridor. The town should be aware if the sidewalk cannot be fit entirely within the New York State right away, a land donation will be required. Also, to Liddy USA LLC, based on the increased traffic in the area, the New York State DOT will require new signal equipment at the intersection of Route 303 and Oak Tree Road. Please review the attached items and included in the estimate cost of the work the right away. Please update the permit dash perm-33.com description to show that as part of the project mitigation that you will provide New York State 3G-4G LTE gateway modem with antenna and transfer switch. Okay, along with a large description of whatever. And then I also have from SUEZ. They have no further correspondence, should be sent to this agency. Okay. Cheryl, is there anything else for this application?
That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'll open it up to the board. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I like the idea of eliminating that one entrance in there and making that one long walkway with the the trees there. It could look appealing for the the Route 303. What do they call that? What's the term they use for?
Overlay. Overlay district.
Overlay. Yeah, I think it looks very appealing there. That's all I had, sir.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Mandel?
Yeah. Do you think that they need sidewalks along the front there or not?
Well, you know, it's a big parking lot. Do they really need sidewalks? I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think so, but they asked if, you know, if we determined that they needed or not, and I don't think they do. I don't know how the other members of the board feel, but that would be my recommendation on it.
Okay, okay, thank you. Let's see what, we'll see what the rest of the board says as we go through. Thank you.
Right. And the other question is the regarding Rockland County Planning, number nine. Have you obtained any parking easements or agreements yet, or is that still in the process, Mr. Brenner?
When we get final, we will finalize the cross easements between the inner parties and they will be approved by the town attorney before they get filed.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mandel. Mr. Dell?
Thank you, sir. I agree with some of the concerns expressed. However, looking forward on this, I've always been an advocate of sidewalks. I think maybe right now they may not be needed, but 10, 20 years from now, you don't know. I feel it's good to have the sidewalks in there because right now, any pedestrian traffic there are pretty close to the road and a lot of people are very liberal of their use of that area off the, between the curving and the actual Route 303. I think it is a safety concern, et cetera. I think sidewalks would be most advisable. My question for the applicant is, as you've shown this subdivision here, do you feel that there is adequate parking for the store on, proposed grocery store on the plot that you're setting aside for? Or are they going to have to park also in the contiguous areas?
Okay, I, I wanted to inform the board that Mr. Ben Plum from Boulder Engineering is here, and I think he will give the input to that particular question. Can you answer that, Ben?
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Dell, in answer to your question, sorry, for the record, Ben Plum, representing Boulder Engineering on behalf of the applicant Lidl. We're located at 2929 Expressway Drive North, Hopple, New York. In answer to your question, Mr. Dell, there are going to be cross parking agreements. We do, we have done a traffic correction, a traffic and parking study for the site, and our traffic engineer has concluded that the traffic and parking for the site is adequate. And with the cross access and cross parking agreements, we don't believe there'll be any issues with parking on the site.
Okay, because it's my understanding of all the subdivisions I've seen is that usually, one of the reasons you're doing it is to isolate the area or that's reserved for that particular tenant. And in this case, it seems then like your line, your property is rather arbitrary rather than encompassing the amount of traffic or the amount of parking needed for this particular applicant.
Well, Mr. Dell, without getting into the details of the specific deal between the, the current owner and the future owner, the reason that the property has been subdivided in this way is because Lidl will be purchasing the property, so it won't be a new tenant per se. It will be a new owner of the property. Once the subdivision is complete, there will be a closing. Parking line was drawn in terms with the deal, correction, sorry, the property line was drawn in accordance with the deal made between the two parties. And part of that deal is that there will be cross access and cross parking between the two properties as required, so that it can benefit from the entire parking area.
All right, those are the details you said you didn't want to discuss, and we didn't have the time for. Can you give me a quick overview, just so I have a clear view of what's going on here?
Okay, well, I'd like to introduce then Mr. McCanally, who's representing Lidl, and he has a lot more details on the actual deal itself between the current property owner and Lidl, who will be coming into the property.
Hi, everyone.
Hear a little bit of that, yes.
Hi, everyone. McCanally, represent Lidl. So I think the answer to your question is the, the reason for that line you're seeing is solely due to the fact that we're purchasing the property. Now, a subdivision was required for us to actually close on the site. It, it will very much be a communal parking lot. We do have cross access agreements that will be signed prior to closing. So answer the question, yes, we do anticipate customers for our store parking on the existing owner's property and vice versa.
Okay, but also to the larger question, it's a fairly arbitrary line, it wasn't dictated by any parking concerns. But probably on square footage, the lot?
No, no, there's no parking concerns from, from our side.
You're, you're correct, Mr. Mandel.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I said, you're correcting your assumption in that there was other factors other than just parking that helped to determine the location of that line.
Okay, can you tell me briefly what they were?
I'm sorry, I assume this is a question for me. I, I don't think I'm understanding the question. Could you just repeat, please?
All right, you have a lot line that you've drawn, and you're bringing it into us and asking for a subdivision. Now, from what you're telling me, the location and the size of that lot is not really connected to the amount of parking you require. So how did you come out with that? Because usually, you know, when you do that, it's to have all your parking contained within your lot, but now you're telling me it's going to be cross easements, which is okay. But I just want to know how you came out with that particular size, because if you increase it slightly, then you would have a chance for more landscaping, et cetera, which you are virtually showing none on this property. And that's usually a situation you have, where you have an official, you have a small plot, and you're trying to put a building in it. But here, it's almost like as if you're creating your own hardship. So trying to find the lot.
So, so I think the, to answer your question initially, when we, when we started, you know, discussing this deal, the idea was that where the existing on fire box was, being that that's being taken down, and the other building is going to be remaining up, stand, the other building, the other portion of that building is going to remain in place. So we had to draw a line somewhere, so we thought it made sense to do it there, being that the, the owner of the center is going to be retaining the rest of that building. And we were going to be taking down that box, we are taking on the work for that, and then we're building our building. So I mean, a line had to be drawn somewhere, and that made the most sense for our deal.
Mr. Brenner, can you, can you reference the variance, the ZBA decision? For Mr. Dell?
I don't have that with me right now, but I think the point to get involved here is that this is an existing shopping center that's been in that instance all the time. When we went to the zoning board, we said, we are taking down the old restaurant building, we're going to build a supermarket. This is what the client is purchasing. However, we're not changing the complexion of the overall subdivision, and therefore, we are going to have cross easements for parking ingress and egress. So it pretty much remains the same. But legally, we have adequate parking to handle all of the stores that are in the subdivision. So therefore, that, that's been done. This company's done it many other places, and we've had other companies in the town do this. In other words, there is adequate parking based on cross agreement. And however, they did purchase, the company wanted to purchase where the building is going, they wanted to own that property. And I think that's primarily it. The zoning board agreed to it, and when we laid out the original subdivision, when you gave preliminary approval, you agreed to it too.
Okay, so then from what you're telling me, that let's say if I or some of the other board members asked that the size of the the expanded to allow for additional planting or whatever else we think was necessary, that will not present any hardship in terms of your parking. Is that correct?
No, we, we've gone to Akabor, and we've told what kind of plantings we were going to put in, and Akabor was satisfied as to what we presented to them.
I know, but that wasn't quite my question.
Well.
But basically, you're telling me it wouldn't be a problem if, let's say, myself or some of the other board members wanted to see a little bit more planting, and then those islands could be increased in size, correct?
Mr. Dell?
It'll be discussed, but I want to make sure.
Mr. Dell, I understand the question. So part of the answer is that the existing parking lot in front of the, the seller's building, which will be the building to remain, the owner wants to maintain control of that area and control of his frontage, in order to maintain that frontage on Route 303.
I know. I'm sorry, I think you're missing, missing my point, because see, sometimes we have a situation where, let's say, if we were to approve this subdivision as is, and then we hear there's a hardship now because we don't have any room in there to do any additional landscaping or increase the size of the islands. But in this case, that would not be an obstacle because of the cross parking, which we just discussed. Am I correct?
Well, you know, if, if the developer of the residual
Yes or no, that's all.
Mr. Dell, no, because the parking hazard that's currently drawn on the entire site plan meets the parking requirement. If we were to reduce that number, we would need to go back to the zoning board for an additional variance. To be honest, there is probably some room in that parking field. But right now, from a legal standpoint, we've been to the zoning board, and we have a variance approved for the number of stalls on the site. For us to reduce that, that stall further would require further investigation.
You mean that you have no extra parking on the entire site?
No, there is no extra.
What I'm after, all I just want is to simply to know, unless that's, I know we're dealing with
There are two additional stalls, Mr. Dell, that we could afford in accordance with our variance, with 369 stalls supplied and 367 required. So there are two additional stalls that we could remove.
All right, well, all I'm talking about is rather than trying to have an opportunity, if we're so determined, to be able to put in extra landscaping in this site that we're talking about for the store. So that's a not, that's a potential.
No, that's not true. If the residual stores come back and they want to make some improvements, they want to make some expansion, they're going to have to come back to the board. And if the board at that time says wants some additional plantings done on the residual property, you have a right to ask for it if it's needed. And that's something that, and, and these agreements would permit it. My client just wants to build his supermarket, and he needs the subdivision because he wants to own the property where he wants to build the supermarket.
I don't think we're communicating here, perhaps. All I want to know is if the board determines that, or when we're looking at this, we just, we feel we need some extra greenery, maybe enlarged islands in this particular subdivision that we've now created, that we have an option of doing so without having to hear, oh, no, you can't because we'll run out of parking. Am I correct in that?
In order to quickly answer that, Mr. Dell, we'd have to conduct an additional parking study.
An additional parking study to enlarge some of those islands a little bit?
Well, we've got, we're providing 369 stalls, 367 are required. So we are meeting those, that code requirement in all, you know.
For this, for this particular piece of property or for the entire subdivision?
For the, for the entire subdivision, sir.
Okay, I'm only talking about this piece of property. If, let's say, we determine Okay, I'm only talking about this piece of property. If, let's say, we determine that one or two of those islands should be a little bit bigger, would it be a problem? I'm just trying to get a straight answer, that's all.
Well, I'm trying to give you, I'm trying to give you a straight answer, to be honest, and...
I know.
Well, Mr. Dell, I think Akabor looked at the parking, looked at the landscaping, and they determined that what they had proposed was adequate.
Well, let's just see how this goes on. As long as I've stated this very clearly at this point in time, when the actual, the second part of this application, I might be asking some questions, some of the other members might be asking some questions. But I don't feel we should be constrained by drawing what they, which we haven't had a chance yet to reveal. And since there's obviously not a parking consideration, because you have shared parking, and you do have some extra area over there, if we wanted to put something in here, perhaps it could be an option. That's all. All right, well, that's all my questions for now, sir. Thank...
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Andrews.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On two subjects here, I don't believe there's a need for sidewalks right now. And I don't believe there's a need for any extra landscaping because of this parking situation. We don't want to take any more parking away from what they have, and that would just create another problem. So those are my, my views on this subject. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bond?
Um, no, I don't have any issues with any further, like, islands or landscaping in the parking lot. And I would, I would be in favor of the sidewalks. So, that's all.
In favor of or not in favor of the sidewalk?
I'm, I'm in favor of the sidewalk.
You are in favor, okay.
Yeah.
Because if, looking at the plan, that it's going to be a sidewalk to nowhere. They can't put anything on the other end. Jersey's not going to put one in, and New York's not going to put anything in, because it goes up to Oak Tree Road, and they can't go any further with it. So it's just that one area, which is basically, right now, a big parking lot from one end to the other end. So I think that personally, I think...
It'd still look better, it'd still look better with a sidewalk there. You know, maybe, you know, it would still look better with a sidewalk there. And you get, you know, it's, it's narrow, the road narrows there. I mean, at least you got a little bit of a sidewalk, you know?
Well, okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, can I ask the engineer to explain what would be involved in installing the sidewalk?
Thank you, Slaven. Am I able to share my screen? Or am I able to, might have presented, so I could maybe bring up a... Plan? Thank you.
Okay, you're all set.
Thank you so much. Make sure I share the right screen here. Okay. And what I'd like to show you is, actually, the Route 303 frontage is probably the best, best view we can get here. And just, please bear with me while my computer catches up. We'll drop our little man into Google Maps here. All right, so what we can see is, on Route 303, we're just located right now at the New Jersey boundary. We can see this Wendy's frontage, which does form part of the subdivision. As part of both the zoning board comments from the initial site plan, and also Rockland County planning comments, we're adding a very nice landscape buffer in a longer frontage, which will match the existing landscape buffers along our... Along our shopping center here, so with these nice dense hedges and some street trees, that's going to be brought down along the Wendy's frontage. And you can see here, what we have is the, a nice wide shoulder on New York Route 303. There is currently a curb, and it looks like some sort of old sidewalk system of some kind was in here, that was previously removed in order to accommodate some landscape area. The issue with a full sidewalk down this frontage is that there are a number of highway signs, and also a number of utility poles on, on the curb and sidewalk, right where the sidewalk would have to be located, specifically at this location here, and also at the corner of the property where vehicles be making a turn in. The relocation of these poles would be quite an additional expense, and it may not even be possible. We'd have to coordinate with utility providers. There are maximum spacings between poles, and there are other poles located on the site that we're leaving in place. So a sidewalk down here, apart from taking away and potentially impacting some of these really nice street trees that we have along the front, would in fact require a significant amount of additional work along the frontage. So it would be our request and recommendation that, you know, due to the nice landscaping currently in place, and the additional work required in order to install a sidewalk to essentially the New Jersey border, that, as one of the members had noted, would not be likely picked up from New Jersey, and doesn't really go anywhere. We request that this sidewalk be not considered by the zoning board.
Couldn't you put a sidewalk, couldn't you go around the pole with the sidewalk? There's enough room to go around the poles?
There would be enough room to go around the poles. There are two concerns with that. First is that the, the street trees would be affected, so there would be landscaping having to be removed in order to accommodate that. The second is that the property boundary right now pretty much runs along that landscape boundary. To move the sidewalk into the property would require a land dedication, the process for which, you know, we're probably aware, can take upwards of eight to 12 months. So we're really trying, we're delaying this process any further. You know, been going through these approval processes and getting some great feedback from the town for about nine or 10 months now. And we're really looking forward to moving this along and getting this new supermarket built.
It looks like if you were to go ahead and put a sidewalk, you might be disturbing a lot of vegetation that's already there.
Yes, absolutely.
Because it, because if anybody wants to walk down there, they can actually walk on the other side of the Hendrow, and they have a perfectly safe place. I tell you, the way 303 is in there, I really wouldn't want to walk along that side. So, I mean, okay. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Young, I didn't ask you what your opinion was on the sidewalk. I'm going to lean towards not putting the sidewalk in now, after seeing this demonstration. Thank you, sir. And myself, I also feel that they should not put it in. So, if we're holding a vote, that's four against and two for. So, I...
I'm okay with that. Yeah, I'm okay with that. That's the way we go, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. Okay, um, okay. Who else hadn't I asked? Okay, Mr. Bond, you were the last one. Okay, so I'm going to open this up to the public. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this application?
Just real quick, Pete McGarville, I hold over from the previous application. I would just suggest you reconsider the sidewalks, because if any of you have gone to get gas in Jersey, and you come northbound, very often, there are people walking in that, that side of the street. And for whatever reason, they tend not to walk inside the park a lot. I routinely go down there to ShopRite, and maybe I'm going to wind up going to this new supermarket. But the people, I believe, are taking the bus that gets dropped off on Oak Tree Road, and there is no other way on the other side of the street to walk. And you can very often see people dressed in clothing, indicating that they work in Wendy's. So just something to consider, maybe the applicant to consider some way to convey those people so that they're not in harm's way, because it ultimately puts them in this lane where they're shaded. And with so many driveways there, I just do fear that you're opening people up to get struck as the congestion increases at this property. So again, well done overall. Thanks again for your help with the previous application, but I just want to give you that feedback quickly on this one.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anybody else from the public wish to make questions or comments on this application? Okay, can I have a motion to close the public session?
Andrews moves to close the public session.
Mr. Andrews makes a motion to close. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconds. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, um, can I have a motion to reaffirm Sequo?
I'll make a motion.
To reaffirm Sequo. Mr. Bond makes a motion to reaffirm Sequo. Mr. Mandell, seconds.
Okay, motion for final with conditions?
Motion for final with conditions.
Mr. Mandell, okay, conditions are. Jane Slaven, November 8th, has six. Peters, November 9th, has six. Your fire prevention has none. Booker Engineering, March 10th, has six. Rockland County Department of Planning, February 23rd, they have 16. Rockland County Highway, dated February 9th, they have one. And I have a letter from Orange and Rockland. And then, letter from New York State Department of Transportation, March 4th letter. Okay, and... That is it. So can I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Bond, second.
Before you vote, sir?
Yes, Mr. Dell.
Okay, just a brief comment. I understand what Mr. Brenner was saying. I remember when that old grand, in 1961, I think it was, and back then, everything could be a sea of blacktop. We're not obviously in the same type of area. Things have been upgraded. We have far greater population density. Regarding that strip that we're talking about on the boat, it's basically used as a de facto acceleration, deceleration lane, which I think was graphically pointed out in the applicant's own picture, looks like from Google, where you showed a car coming up from Jersey area towards the entrance of this parking lot. In that area, you have a lot of people walking in there. And I think, you know, a lot of it's based on the way it's now configured. I understand that it'd be very, very problematic to put in a sidewalk at this time. I myself, I'm not going to totally, you know, vote against it because of that. I feel very strongly it should be done. But a lot of this is a result, um, previous, what I would call, shall we say, less than superlative planning, which has let all this actually evolve over time. And I'm just very concerned that because you have a lot of people using the water mat, etc., going across that street at all times, that we're going to have, unfortunately, I hope it doesn't happen, but it's a chance, a good one, I think, of a terrible accident in that area. But that being said, that's all my comments on this. I think the planning board should, has a rough decision on this one. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dell. Okay, so, all in favor? On the, on the final with conditions? Okay, okay. I think we, I'm sorry, I think we need a second. Do I have a second on the, on the final?
I, I think I started the second it before Mr. Dell chimed in, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bond.
We didn't take it, we let him comment, so.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you, very good. Okay, next is Town Plaza Site Plan, PB 21-20. Okay, Honorable Board, this particular now is the site plan for the building, per se. If you take a look at the application, this building also appeared before you, aboard, it got preliminary approval. We got zoning board variances, we went to Akabor, got their approval, and we are here now for final approval, so that the supermarket can be built. Thank you, sir. I'll go through the comments. Office of Building, Zoning, Planning, Jane Slaven, March 8th, he has six. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Bruce Peters, March 9th. He has 17. Fire Prevention, March 9th. They have no further comment at this time. Booker Engineering, March 10th. Proposed applicant has provided significant drainage information that demonstrate that potential significant adverse impact with respect to drainage can be mitigated. We therefore recommend that the Town Plaza Site Plan and subdivision be approved for drainage, subject to the above project comments, of which there are six. Rockland County Planning. Dated February 23rd, they have 15. Rockland County Highway, February 9th. This department has no comment. Again, letter from Orange and Rockland dated February 22nd, about the services. And again, the letter from New York State Department of Transportation, March 4th, which has a letter and quite a bit of other things. And again, um... A SUE has said that no further, no further correspondence for this site plan should be sent to this agency. That's all I have. Cheryl, is there anything else?
That's it, Tom.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to open it up to the board. Mr. Young?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Mandell?
Yes, a couple of questions. In regards to the supermarket, specifically the parking spots facing the sidewalk on the southwest and partial northwest corners, what are you going to construct to prevent vehicles from jumping the curb, such as bollards or planters, etc.? Would you answer that, please?
This is Ben Plum again, from Bowler Engineering, representing Lidl, who is the applicant on this application. And the answer to your question is that the, those curbs are full six-inch reveal curbs. There is no additional planters or bollards proposed in front of those curves. Those, you know, it's a pretty typical industry standard that a six-inch curb is, is okay in front of a building like that. To this, you know, we haven't had any previous comments regarding vehicles jumping the curb or anything like that. This would be typical site layout for a six-inch full reveal curb in front of those locations.
Well, this, there are a lot of elderly drivers, especially looking at the front entranceway. This is my opinion, because we've done this with hotels. ShopRite in Pearl River had a car crash right into their, a part of their store. Other places have too. People think they're hitting reverse, and they go forward. But especially in front of the entranceway there, I think there should be some bollards or planters or something. We've done this in other shopping centers within, that we've approved in the past. That's my, my recommendation. I don't know how the rest of the board feels on it, but that's what I would suggest there.
Mr. Mandell, sorry, and just to clarify, right in front of the, the entranceway, there is a, a large area that is protected by bollards. I can show you that on a, on the site plan. I could also show you on the, the architectural elevation showing those bollard locations, if that would be helpful.
It would be.
Let me just share my screen again here. Going into your question, the little black dots here, these represent bollards. So this whole area would be protected by bollards, and would have accessibility via sidewalk to these areas in order to protect pedestrians. I think I have the...
While you're, let me ask a question. You're showing those two handicap spots where there's bollards in front of those two handicap spots? If you can go back to that? Yeah?
There, there are bollard signs. So these are signs that are located on bollards? Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, yes. Okay. All right, it looks a lot safer now, the entranceway than it did before. And those things you said, that would you just define those, was it bollards with signs on in front of the handicap parking spaces? Or just stanchions, or what?
Yeah, they're, they're essentially, it's exactly as it sounds. It's a bollard, it's a sign with a, a bollard with a sign sticking out of it. And I'm just trying to see if I can find... And I'm just trying to see if I can find out detail on the detail sheet.
No, as long as it ballots, that's, that's fine by me. Okay, uh, second question. The, um, in regards to landscape plan, it would have been nice, I see you, you have all the trees noted and everything. Would have been nice if you, since you gave each one a, uh, a separate type of mark, it would have been nice, uh, legend. Would have made it much easier to read the plans. But regarding the, uh, trees that are gonna be put up in front of the, uh, I think that's Wendy's on the south side of the development?
Yep.
That right there, is that Wendy's? Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, uh, what's the height of the, uh, the plantings there?
Uh.
Cause I see there.
Check the.
They noted as, uh, JSSG and JCSG, yeah. Along there, I was just wondering, is there a berm along there? What would be the height?
Uh, I think they grow to about four to five feet, or maybe four to six feet, um, and they will, uh, they will essentially match, they, they, they match the existing shrubbery that's already along that, uh, that front edge. They're the same types of plants and they'll, they'll form into those same hedgerows.
Oh. Okay, all right. Um, no further questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mandel. Mr. Dell.
Thank you, sir. The comment just made by the applicant, I'd like to clarify it. He's talking about the height that the, uh, plantings will grow to. There's often a big difference between what they will grow to and what size they're being put in. We have had an example, people representing, they're putting in two to three foot high plants. And, uh, they're gonna take maybe twenty years because the things they're putting in, you can barely put in stuff plus. Can you give us some indication of the size range of plants you're proposing to put in?
Uh, yes, sir. The specification on the landscape plan is that they must be planted at, uh, twenty-four inches high, so they must be two feet high when they're planted.
Uh, okay, excellent. All right, and that should be in a general plant legend that's there. Mr. Mandel comments about the bollards, I think is well taken. It looks like you've taken care of that. Um, two questions I have now in the parking area. One has to do with these, uh, nice little sidewalk areas. You have one coming into the, uh, southwest corner. And the other one coming basically from the south to the north. Um, usually when you do that in something this size, what we try to do in the past is try to have, uh, brick pavers in that area so that not only is there the, um, visual sign, but there's also, um, something of a textural nature, which will hopefully remind people that they're not supposed to be speeding through those areas. To make it a safe area. So then when you approach it, you'll see, oh, that's a different color. You understand what I'm talking about now?
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted to clarify. You, you're talking about, uh, this area in front of the store here?
No, the sidewalks, the sidewalks in the parking lot. Yes, that area coming down towards the building. See, see the little area where it goes across the, the McAdam? A little bit further east. Well, that whole area, but particularly the area where it goes across the McAdam.
Okay.
Yeah, yes. A little further, a little further to the east, please. You're going west. Bring, right there, sort of there. And you have another one there designated in blue. You see that? That little sidewalk area designated lightly in blue? No, it's not sidewalk, I'm sorry. That, yes.
The crosswalk, I understand.
Yeah, they can be, they should be in brick pavers. I see no reason not to do that. We've done that with everybody from Lowe's to, uh, uh, all quite a few other applicants. I think that would make a big, uh, improvement, at least in terms of safety. Because when people approach that, you know, they won't just be jaywalking across the parking lot. It'll be visible by the different texture and also would tend to keep the pedestrians within that area. And in that light also, I don't understand why you have parking, a handicap parking across the parking lot. The handicap parking should be right against the building because if you're disabled, that means you might have some trouble walking. And if you have some trouble walking in inclement weather, it wouldn't be a good thing. And also having to slowly walk across an area with a large amount of traffic. So those, those two places in the south area, um, to, um, you could see the, yes, they should be moved close to the building. There's no reason why they can't be put in there somewhere.
So, to- totally understand that and I, and I respect that comment. Um, the, the way, the reason that these are located here is, is as we had discussed before, there is some shared parking and, uh, some access between the, uh, the buildings here. Uh, and our thought was that given the ADA parking, uh, for this building is located so far to the south of the property, we thought it might be nice to, uh, maybe spread out the ADA parking here so that potentially people who are, uh, accessing the north of this building would have the same opportunity as people who are accessing the supermarket. There is also ADA parking provided right in front of the supermarket, uh, in accordance.
Well, we have a CVS store, which is about a quarter the size of this. And there we have four spaces. So I think then you should put it up in two spaces against the front of the building.
You're saying an additional two spaces, sir, in here?
Yeah, either side or even to the, even to the island, even to the east of that little island you have there. Yes, in, in, I'm there, you know, if you need to place for the van, et cetera, van access, okay. But I think there should be, uh, not have to choose between that two corner spots and then walking across here where it could actually be dangerous, particularly in, in inclement weather. I don't think that's too bad of a, uh, thing. I have a problem doing that.
Mr. Dell, if I can say something, uh, I, I'm intent, but I believe the intent of putting those two parking spots there is that those people can access either building, either the building to the north or to the south. If you, if you.
I understand that, that's fine. You should have two spaces close to the building, two additional spaces. It's, I don't think it's a hardship.
Okay, well.
You don't even have to have, you know, if you don't wanna have the, uh, lose the other space by having the, uh, van access, that would be okay too. But, um, I'm disabled. Some of the other people here might be disabled. And it's not a good situation when you have to walk across traffic in inclement weather where people are maybe not being as patient as they should be. Let them put two more spaces next to the building and then they'll have a canopy they can walk right through and everything will be just fine.
So you want them to add additional handicap?
Yes, two. Who in the southern area? I don't think there'll be any hardship for them because they're trying to do double duty with the other two. If, if the other building has people using it for the, uh, the building to the south is using it, then you only have two handicap spots for this building. And I think it's way under, particularly with the grand population that we have. Of which, sir, you and I are both members.
Not me.
Okay, well, I'll plead guilty to being in my seventies. Final point on this is the fencing on the easterly border. You have wood fencing, stockade fencing in there. Well, you have a section that's been plowed down approximately twenty feet from the street. There's about a ten-foot section. I'm talking about on the, uh, far easterly boundary between you and the residential property.
Understood, yep. I know what you're talking about, sir. I know exactly what you're talking about.
Mm-hmm. I go in the back. Yeah, okay, now go to the left, okay. I see that, see that nice little dark piece of fencing you're showing there? Yeah, right about in there. That doesn't exist anymore. It's been plowed down.
Well, it has to be repaired. It will be repaired.
Right, exactly. So that'll be part of the decision that you'll agree to repair, right? No, that won't be a problem. Okay, now, do you have any problem with the handicap spots just putting in two?
The only, uh, the only comment additionally that I would make there is that due to the layout of the site, um, the, the location that you're proposing, and, uh, to be, to be clear, first of all, we are meeting the, uh, both federal and state codes with the number of stalls we're providing, and I understand and respect.
Sure you are.
The, uh, the, um, additional aging population in the area. Locating stalls in this location that you're suggesting on the south side.
And then further to the, further to the east, sir. Even on the other side of that little island. Yeah, right in there.
I totally understand that. So, so the, the, the two requirements of the code are that the ADA stalls be located as close to the entrance of the buildings as possible that they're being, uh, located for. So, uh, adding ADA stalls in this area wouldn't actually meet any, uh, ADA code. Additionally.
Then why do you have two across the street? I don't, two across the lot? Does it?
Totally understand that, sir. And they're, and they're being, you, they've been distributed around the site in accordance with the code in order to.
I don't, I, I'm sorry, I would disagree with that. The landscaping, okay, I could have sort of understand that for what you've got there. I think I'd be very adamant about three things. One is that the sidewalks have some sort of, maybe brick pavers, which is what we've done at Lowe's and many other places for safety sake. Number two is that you need these two, uh, additional handicap spots against the building. And number three is repair that small section of fence.
Understood.
I'm gonna have trouble supporting this.
Uh, I understand, Mr. Dell. And my, my question to you is, would you support additional stalls on the western side of the building located adjacent in this area? The reason being that the path of travel from the south side of the building would not necessarily be compliant with the, uh, location of the bollards and the canopy columns that are here. So anybody in a wheelchair accessing that building from the south side have a difficult time in actually using the path of travel.
Uh, well, then why do you have the parking spaces, the yellow ones across the area where you're claiming are serving both areas? It doesn't make any sense. Well, show me where the entrances to the building, sir. Can you do that?
Yep, that would be, uh, right here.
Okay, fine. Then put them there. I'd be happy with that.
Okay.
Two additional parking spaces there. So you have four. And also to remember, ADA's are minimum, you know? And it's like, you know, with the noise control, you have a max, minimum, a maximum on the noise control, but any more that has to be illegal. Doesn't mean it's desirable. Okay, so I think we could, we could go along with this. I think it'll be a good gesture. I think it's gonna actually increase your business. So if you could put the two there, the brick pavers and the other one. Now, the other board members might totally disagree with me. But I think all these are reasonable demands due to the scale of project. I'm sure it's gonna be a great store. I'll probably go in there myself if I can find a hang of spot.
Yes, sir, totally understood.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dell. Mr. Andrews.
Um, by putting in those two extra, uh, handicap spots, how many, uh, parking spaces will you lose? You only have two extra.
We would be required to lose an additional one stall to add a strikeout. Um, in speaking with my client, he, he would be willing to move these stalls if, uh, that would satisfy Mr. Dell. You know, if, if he feels that these aren't really adding anything to the site plan, we'd be happy to relocate these stalls to the area that I'd indicated.
I, I'd go with that. That's all I have right now.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Plum, can I ask one question? If you take those stalls and relocate them to the other side, will the existing building meet ADA requirements?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
That's, that's why I, 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 I'm kind of, personally, I object to that moving those two that are there because they do service both buildings. If you move them towards the other building, they're only gonna service one building. So the other building to the south is gonna be lacking s- spots. And if we start putting spots down there, then we're gonna just throw off the numbers. Um, I, I, I don't know, you know, personally, I think that the, the parking situation the way it is right now is, is, is good because people can walk across the street. They walk through parking lots all the time. So, I mean, that's just my personal opinion. All right, Mr. Andrews, that's all you had?
Yes, that's, uh, well, let me just, uh, ask one, uh, where is the entrance to that building where those two stalls are here? That you wanna move? Where's the entrance to that building?
Right.
No, no, not that, not that building, the other one.
Uh, this is a multiple tenant building, so each of these demised spaces.
Okay. Now, that's all I have right now.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Bond?
I could, you know, obviously repair the fence, uh, I, I could live, if you wanna move the handicap parking, I'm okay with that, but. So, but I'm not gonna hang it.
Or we're gonna make additional spots?
Excuse me? I'll go in the direction of the rest of the board. I'm not gonna hang it up for that. If, if they, if they, if the board wants to move them, I'm okay with it. If they don't, I'm okay with that too, so.
Okay, cause my, my concern is if you move those two, you're gonna deny the building to the south anybody from parking, anybody who needs a handicap parking from parking to going into that bill, those buildings. There's, there's a bunch of stores there. They're, they're gonna have to park all the way down to the end. If they, if that.
There's a cross, there's a crosswalk right next to those parking, so it's, it's not like it's a big hardship to cross the street, you know? To cross the, you know, go across the parking lot. You, you ever, if you've ever been to Shop Right, everybody does that. Everybody who parks handicap shop, like they cross. Same, similar to, and it's not a problem for anybody. They, they do it all the time. You know, so twenty-four, you know, not twenty-four hours a day, twelve hours a day, eighteen hours a day, seven days a week, you know, so. It's not, you know, and, I mean, no parking lot's gonna be busier than Shop Right. Or, or as tight as Shop Right is, so.
They cross the street all the time. That's why, uh, you know, you, that's why I feel the parking lay, personally, I think the parking layout right there is excellent. That's, that's my opinion, so.
Right next to the crosswalk, so.
The crosswalk, they can, they can, they can, he can do that. If they wanna put the pavers in there, that's okay. But, you know, I just, I just leave the parking where it was, if it was me. Okay, um, okay, a- any other board members have any comments? No, not.
Yeah, Mr. Mandel.
Okay, Mr. Mandel?
Yeah, two things. Going back to the, um, to that parking, uh, the, uh, the, just the question, the interior of your stores, are they all standard? Cause you have a store that you just opened up in, uh, I think it's Park Ridge, New Jersey. They, is it pretty much standard, the interior of the stores?
Uh, they, they do differ. Hi, everyone, it's Matt again, uh, representing Lidl. They do differ. So this store is different than Park Ridge. Park Ridge was a, a backfill, meaning that it was an existing building that we went in and built our store within. This will be a ground up. So, uh, we have many different prototypes and backfill many different various spaces.
Okay, the reason, uh, I asked that is because I agree with Mr. Dell that on the west side of the building, you add two more handicap there and leave the other ones where they are, but add two more there, uh, because your store is very accessible to people that handicap the, at least in Park Ridge, the, uh, aisles are very wide. I don't think you're gonna make narrow aisles in your store. But two more, uh, uh, parking spots there would not, uh, cause you to, uh, need a variance. You lose one spot and you're still up by, uh, one. So I think, uh, I know, that's my opinion on the west side. I agree with Mr. Dell on that. The second question I have is going down to the plantings in front of Wendy's. You said that they are twenty-four inches high. Now, is that gonna be planted on a berm or is that gonna be flat on the ground?
Right now, right now, they're proposed to be planted on the existing ground. Um, adding a berm in this area.
Yeah.
Uh, wouldn't necessarily.
Okay, there's a problem with that. Okay, the problem with that is, is that the cars and SUVs pulling up there and parking, their headlights will go out onto Route three oh three, which is, uh, not permitted. So somehow they gotta be, uh, a little bit higher to start out so those lights are blocked. Especially the way the, the parking spots are slanted. Uh, but no lighting, no lighting from parking is supposed to go out onto Route three oh three. Your other side, your north, as you go north on the, uh, three oh three, it's quite high there. It's excellent. It blocks all the light. But I think that you definitely need a, to figure out a way of going a little bit higher along there in order to comply with, uh, DOT and, uh, and the three oh three overlays.
Understood.
Mr. Mandel, I, I believe that the parking that i- is shown for Wendy's is the existing parking, so whatever's there is there. So I think there.
Yeah, it may be existing.
But if we're gonna be planting, uh, hiding the landscape, the lights. Cause that's existing. I don't think that's being changed.
No, but they're doing plantings there and we might as well make the road safer by raising the height of the plantings there.
We, we have no objection to adding a small berm. We have no, no objection to adding a small berm in this area for the plantings. It would match the existing, uh, frontage along the corridor, uh, and I think it would be a good improvement to the area.
I think it would make a, a huge difference. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else from the board? Mr. Dell.
Thank you again, sir. I'm sorry to take up so much time. I certainly agree with what Mr. Mandel said. The, uh, Wendy's there was built way before we had an overlay zone. Excuse me. And the reason that we created the overlay zone, and I was involved in that, some of them might have been involved, was to correct going forward, uh, mistakes, what appeared to be mistakes in past planning. And then went a different time when there wasn't just much traffic. And I think it's the obligation of this board when we have something like this coming through. If we could do minor modifications to improve the entire area, that's not necessarily, uh, a bad thing. And I appreciate the applicant's willingness to do that. You know, the cost will be minimal. But even when they drive by, I think they'll feel a lot better about what they've done. Uh, I do think the ideal solution is to put the two additional slots, spots next to the ones on the westerly side. I don't even know, though, if you need to have, um, a van access. So in other words, you could possibly have two handicap spots next to each other. I'm not sure of the legislation. Now, also, two, one thing that's might be a little misunderstood. Having the part, anybody who comes into a handicap spot obviously has to be able to get inside the door. They have to be capable with you, that or with assistance, to get inside the door. The problem is some of them, like myself, can only work, walk a limited amount of distance. So if you have a spot that's there, you then can cut down the amount of distance. And also, too, the biggest thing, as we, I mentioned, is the hazards of walking slowly across, um, through a parking lot. That, you know, and that's, uh, that's why those things would be there. I think the type of business that they have and the nature of the area, I think those spots are well utilized. I feel with the, um, absolutely feel that they should be done, and I appreciate the support I seem to be getting on the, uh, brick pavers for those two little walk areas. These are not big expenses, but they make a very, very big difference to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else from the board? Okay, I'm gonna open up the public. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this? One more time, anybody from the public wish to speak on this?
Mr. Chairman, I, I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
If the applicant can address number four of my comments, which is the northeast corner of the entry. Parking area, uh, the driveway there. If you go northeast, go down. Go down further. As you come in the parking lot, right by the loading area, it, it gets very narrow. Yes, right there. What is that width?
That is a twenty-two foot aisle.
Okay, on the plan, it scales at seventeen feet.
I will definitely add a dimension to that plan on the, on the resubmission, so that you can, uh, clearly see that the, the pinch point there is twenty-two feet.
Okay, is that, that really would be a critical area?
Understood. Uh, it's expected, you know, uh, obviously that this area is, is mostly a back of house and that there would be very, very low traffic flow in this area.
Well, um, just a experience with the ShopRite down in North Vale. Local residents learn what the quickest access is, and typically it's behind the building.
Understood.
So I would be concerned in that area that it might be a little too tight. So if you could provide, uh, at least to my department to make sure that we are safe in a large area, making sure that those dimensions are clear and that we have a decent flow of traffic there without any issues, I'd appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, can I have a motion to close the public session, please?
Motion to close public session.
Mr. Andrews makes a motion. Mr. Mandel seconds. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
None, okay, thank you. Um. Motion to reaffirm, uh, SEQA?
Motion to reaffirm SEQA, Mr. Mandel.
Mr. Mandel, do I have a second? Andrew seconds. Andrew seconds. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
No, no opposition. Thank you very much. Okay, can I have a motion for final with conditions?
I'll make a motion.
Motion for final with.
Mr. Bond makes a motion for final with conditions. And the conditions are, um, Jane Slapin, March eighth, six. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Bruce Peters, March nine. They have seventeen items. Uh, Bureau of Fire Prevention, March ninth, has no comments. Booker Engineering, March tenth, has six comments. Rockland County Planning, they have fifteen comments. Uh, Rockland County Highway has no comments. Uh, Orange and Rockland, their letter on February twenty-second. And New York State Department of Transportation, their March fourth letter and commentary. Okay, and also, uh, we're gonna, uh, add as conditions that, uh, the applicant, uh, has agreed to add two additional handicap spots in front of the store. And also have ballards in front of them.
The, uh. I think the term would be on the west side of the store rather than the front.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, cuz then they'd be next.
Okay, does the applicant have any problem with that?
Can we just clarify one of two things, uh, that the, the stalls can either be relocated from the north of the southern building? Or additionally, that we, uh, have the opportunity to analyze the grading, uh, in front of the store because right now there is a, a grade change from Birchtree Road down to the front of the store that may not be conducive to ADA, and we may have to relocate those stores so, somewhere else on the site. So being very specific about the location of the stalls, I feel may, uh, potentially run us into, maybe running the grading, uh, or some sort of other issue. I, you know, like some flexibility with regard to the location of those stalls if required.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Dell.
I understand what the applicant is saying. However, let's just put them here. And if, and if there is a problem, then they can come back. We won't have to, we could handle it as a simple consultation. But right now, I think that's a direction very strongly we should go.
Well, what if we asked them primarily to put it on the western side of the building? If they, if it does not correspond to ADA compliance, could they put it on the south side of the building above where the other ADA parking spot is?
Uh, yes, so long as they don't eliminate the other two that are to the south.
This way, this way, they don't have to, this is what I'm trying to stop, if they can.
Okay, I am standstill. Totally agree with you.
Okay, is that okay, Mr. Plum?
Uh, yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, uh, I think Mr. Dell also wanted that crosswalk to be paved so that there's a, uh, a different. In the handicap walkway?
We have no objection to that.
It's, uh, it's noticeable. And what else, Mr. Dell?
That one section of fence.
The fence. Yeah.
Stockade fence. Looked like snowplow hit it or whatever, but.
Yeah, they just have, that's not a problem.
Right.
Okay, is there anything else? I think we've covered everything.
Now, one other thing, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Dell. Uh, Mr. Mandel.
Yeah, in front of Wendy's there to, they said they would raise the, uh, the planting area so that it would block the headlights of the cars.
The planting by Wendy's to put up on a berm, a slight berm.
This sort of cuts the lights out, that's all.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Yeah, we also said they put a plant legend missing the sizes, so it's near to be, that's a minor thing.
Okay. Is everybody happy?
No, I think I also mentioned that.
I want everybody to be happy. Is everybody happy? Okay, do I have a second? Mr. Brenner, don't say anything. I see you looking. Do I have a second? Mr. Bond makes his second. All in favor? Aye. Any other?
Aye.
Done. Okay. Mr. Brenner, gentlemen, you got your final.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And stay healthy.
Yes, thank you, sir. All right, gentlemen, we got extra, uh, we got more stuff to do. Don't go nowhere. I think we have that, um, I think it was the zone change for the town board. Explain that. People are putting bigger sheds in the yards. Mr. Brenner, go away.
Now, you can.
The, the buzzing is from Mr. Dell.
He can stay. He can stay.
What, Mr. Dell?
I'm just saying, obviously, Mr. Brenner wanted to stay. He's obviously entitled, but on the shed.
He can.
Okay, I knew that, but I'm just keeping a record. Um. On the sheds, one of the big problems is if you've ever tried to buy a shed that's ten by ten, it's almost always a special order. It's pretty hard to get. So usually they're ninety-six square, square feet or a hundred and forty-four, twelve by twelves. So I think increasing the sizes from my viewpoint, the homeowner having to do these is not a problem. And the setback, is that setback being increased now? I thought it used to be five feet.
I can't hear anybody. I just lost everything.
Mr. Dell, I believe it's still five feet.
Oh, okay, thank you. Okay, I'm sorry. Go on.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Lot of twelve by twelve shed is, is, that's what the change is.
It's, it's a change from a hundred square feet to a hundred and forty-four square feet.
Yeah, that's reasonable. That's reasonable. Yeah.
So, but again, I want you to understand, it's not only twelve by twelve. It could be ten by fourteen. It could be eight by sixteen.
Not a problem, yeah.
Can we make it bigger? I have a bigger shed.
No. That's what the town board was talking about.
Ten, ten by twenty.
And some people said at the town board meeting that a lot of the older houses have very little storage space in them. If they have even closets in some of their rooms, and that, uh, this would make it a lot easier for them to store things on their property.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I, I have no issue with it.
No, I have no issue with it.
Yeah.
Have to make a formal vote? Well, I, I got a question. Go ahead. If you're allowed a hundred and forty-four square foot shed, is it only one or how many can you have? Can you have several? Can you have two, five, or what? There, I don't think there's, I don't think there's a, uh, limit on the amount of sheds that you could have without a permit. I don't think there's ever been a limit. Well, could we make a recommendation that they are limited to one?
Uh, just so everyone knows, I mean, the main reason this is on is just so we can agree that the town board is the lead agency. And I don't think there's any doubt that the town board should be the lead agency. This is a change of our town code. That's primarily what this is on. I don't know that we really need to discuss the wisdom or advising the town board on what they should do. But for number one, should, the, this board should vote on whether they agree that the town board will be the lead agency. And then if you wanna recommend to the town board anything, you can, but I don't know that they're necessarily looking for that.
So do I have a motion that, uh, you recommend that the town board be the lead agent on this, uh? Yes, Mr. Bond. Okay, Mr. Bond makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Mandel seconds.
Mr. Mandel seconds. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? None.
Aye.
Okay, we're good for that. Do we wanna make any suggestions as to possibly limiting the amount of sheds they could put on? So, anybody wanna say anything or not?
I would say let them do it. It's on their shoulders. They want to do it. I think that's just fine. Obviously, it's gonna, if you had like fifty of them, that could be a problem. But I always thought, um, I was told by the building department when I put up my sheds now twenty years ago, that there was always a limit to two sheds on a property, but maybe it's changed. I think the big thing is a hundred and forty-four square feet is a good thing. And I do, I would disagree with our town attorney on this one, is that before we give them the right to be lead agency, it might be nice if we had an idea of what they were trying to do, that they were giving them permission to do. So as such, I felt our discussion was certainly warranted, and I don't think he meant it the way it came out, but that's how it sounded to me.
Oh, it did not mean it, but, um, again, it is on for voting for lead agency. And there's, this time, this board could not be the lead agency of changing the town code.
I understand.
So there's not much of an issue with that. But obviously, feel free to discuss it and make any recommendations you want to.
Yeah, there, there probably should be a two, two limit, but I'll leave it up to the town board on that. I'm not, okay, they, you know, that's, okay.
All right, so we already voted that the, the town board is gonna be lead, lead agent. Now I need a motion to, uh, close the meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Bond makes the motion to close the meeting. Mr. Dell seconds. All in favor? Aye. Goodbye. See you all. See you all.
Wait a second. Wait, wait.
Oh, wait. Right away, wait, wait.
All right, Cheryl says wait. Everybody pay attention.
Thank you. February twenty-fourth decisions. I need a vote.
Motion to approve February twenty-fourth decisions.
Andrew seconds. Okay.
Thank you.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Okay, Cheryl, you got it. I should say, NA, you got.
Thank you.
All right. Good night, everyone.
All right, good night, all.
Good night, all.
Stay healthy.
Good evening.